All right, good evening and thank you for joining us for the November 12th Board of Education Meeting. If you could all join me for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yes, please remain standing as we will have our students here this evening for a special performance. Mr. Snowden, do you want to introduce the performance?
This is a mix combination of multi-high school chorus with students from Rythm on Rye as well as our show choir as well. So happy to have you.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? whose broad stripes and bright stars through a bale of thorns spied For the waters we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red banner, the flag bursting in air, gave proof to the light that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free and the home of God, red like the brazen?
We can sit now. We can sit.
I'm a senior here at high school. I've been a part of the musical program, the chorus, and theater program for four years and a half, all four years of high school. My brothers were a part of it. And it's always, thank you so much. This is testing. But as I was saying about the musical program, it's always been just such a pleasure being a part of it, being a part of all the acts and projects we've worked on throughout the years, shows, performances, just like tonight. And we're very thankful to have all you guys here and allow us to perform here. We've been looking forward to it for the past couple of weeks ever since we've known. And we have a couple concerts coming up that we would like you guys to attend in the winter and the spring. But I also just wanted to take a couple seconds here to recognize Mr. Snowden. Throughout all four years of high school, you know, he's really just been an amazing person. He's just such an encouraging teacher and he really prioritizes the students first. And I just wanted to come out here and say how thankful on behalf of all of us we are for Mr. Snowden. Thank you. And we have another song for you.
I heard there was a secret chord that didn't play, and it pleased the Lord But you don't really care for what you sing, do you? It goes like this: the fourth, the fifth, the minor fall, the major lift, the baffled king composing Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. You say I took the name and thing, oh, I don't even know the name But if I did, I'd really want it to you. 'Cause a place of light in every word, it doesn't matter what you heard, the holy or the I did my best, it wasn't much. I couldn't feel, so I tried to touch. I told the truth, I didn't come to fool you. And even though it all went wrong, I said before the Lord's strong, with nothing on my tongue but "hallelujah, hallelujah, 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 hallelujah,
Thank you. Thank you for having us here today. And we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. I could just have you stay here all night and just keep singing and I'd be the happiest woman in town. That was absolutely amazing. Thank you all so very much. Oh my goodness, it's amazing. Just the right way to start. I love it. All right, Dr. Byrne, try to follow that. Are you gonna sing?
I might sing. I would have practiced with Tom Snowden if I planned that. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our November 12th Board of Education Meeting. I hope everyone had a nice long weekend due to the Veterans Day holiday yesterday. Captain Leo Matthews, Rye High School, class of 2011, was the keynote speaker at yesterday's observance ceremony on the Village Green. Much has taken place since our last board meeting on October 22nd. The 97th edition of the game took place on October 26th. The weather was beautiful, but too windy to allow skydiver and Rye High School grad Jeff Provinzano to deliver the game ball as we had hoped. The game itself, however, did end up as we hoped with a 24-0 win over the Huskies. Since then, the varsity football team has remained undefeated, winning over Brewster and then Yorktown last Friday night to become one of the Section 1 Class A championship finalists. They traveled to Mayo Park this weekend at 6:00 PM on Friday to play Somers, who defeated Harrison this weekend 13-6, to determine who will be the Section 1 Class A champions. It looks to be a nice chilly night, perfect football weather. On Friday, November 1st, we had no school in observance of Tawali, the Hindu festival of lights. This is the first year we were able to add Tawali to our school holidays, while we hope to continue to do so in the future. Building the annual school calendar is always a significant challenge. With federal and state mandated holidays, along with testing schedules and the regents mandated last day of school, every year we grapple with how to best create a calendar that includes holidays of importance to as many in the community as possible while hitting all of our required marks and restrictions. I have started that process for next year. It is always a lengthy process and later on in the new year, we'll come back to the board with some possibilities with that. On November 7th, Election Day, we had a terrific superintendent's conference day. Thank you, Dr. Murray, and the staff development team and the administrators, the first to take place during the school year this year. Our previous staff development days were prior to the start of school. Our faculty and staff spent the day learning and planning across a variety of content areas with the focus being on designing authentic critical thinking projects, continuing that really important work that we've been engaged in the last few years. Teachers had time to work on designing projects, curating resources, and participating in peer feedback sessions. The Rye Fund for Education kicked off its November appeal with an event at Rye Grill and Bar on November 6th. It was a terrific turnout despite being the day after the election, and we are so grateful to the fund for all they do for our students, teachers, and the community. Coming up on November 18th, we have our first parent university of the school year. We'll be using the same format as last year, given that we received a lot of positive feedback. Parents of elementary students will be able to rotate between different stations to learn about everything from math fact fluency to mystery science to the UFLY phonics program. In construction news, we have received approval for construction of the new wing at Osborne School. So now we are fully approved for all of the new wings, and we've got requests for bids out for the new wings on both Midland and Osborne Schools. Also, the softball field renovation is well underway. If you haven't been behind the high school of late, it's worth a look and on track to be completed for the spring season. And as is always work that our facilities department and business office and operations team are always looking for opportunities to squeeze an extra little bit of work and look at the resources we have. We've also been able, because of the renovation of this field, to take the clay from the infield that's being replaced and do an upgrade of the Milton softball field. So that's happening as we speak, and Rob and Gabby have coordinated with Mrs. Pikarski so that we'll have another very nice playable softball field for minimal cost reusing resources, much like we did with the Midland field when we did the football field at the same time. Continuing on to page three. Our girls varsity swimming team is competing in sectionals with prelims this afternoon and finals tomorrow, both at, I'm not sure if this is correct, I have Felix Festa Middle School in West Nyack. It is. Felix Festa hosts a lot of swim events. So hopefully they've done well today. Have you heard any reports, Mrs. Boyle?
I did hear individual reports, but I have not heard team reports, so I'm not going to anybody on the spot.
Well, we will provide, we will provide updates in my community update. And last but not least, a huge congratulations to the Rye High School varsity girls soccer team, who are in the state semifinals, the final four for the second year in a row. They take on New Hartford this Saturday at noon at SUNY Cortland. If they win, they will then face the winner of Mendon Shoreham Wading River on Sunday at 10:00 AM in the New York State Championships. And if you hadn't seen it, there was a short clip with their national ranking. Fox 5 Sports, local Fox in New York, did a story on the girls soccer team, and it is posted on their website. And if it is Shoreham Wading River, it will be a rematch of last year's final game from Cortland as well. So let's go Garnets. And that concludes my report for this evening. One last note, if the board has not noticed, our updated Rye commitment is now with us here. And you may have noticed out in the schools, the revised Rye commitment has been making the rounds and replacing the older versions. So very exciting, nice new banner back there with all of the updates that the board adopted earlier this year.
Okay, that is exciting news all the way around. See all the amazing things that happen when we go for three weeks, but don't despair. There's only seven days between the next one. So get to, we've got to have great things happening this week, everyone. All right, so we will move now to presentation and discussion number one, a fantastic literacy presentation. Dr. Murray.
Okay, thank you and good evening. Tonight, we're going to be giving you a literacy update that will focus on our phonics program in K-2 and our spelling program in grades three, four, and five. And I'm joined tonight by our two instructional literacy coaches. There's Melissa Ross, who's our K-2 literacy coach, and Tara Bauer, who's our literacy coach for grades three, four, and five. And we also have some teachers here who will also be presenting with us tonight. Jamie Gabberlini, first grade teacher at Midland. We have Ellie Short, kindergarten teacher at Osborne. Mary Tyne, third grade teacher at Midland, and Kim Cola Chapo, kindergarten teacher at Midland. So thank you for being here also. So the last time we did a literacy update was in April 2023, and at that time, we focused primarily on our instruction for small groups of students who needed some interventions. We talked more about like tier two and tier three instruction. And tonight, we're going to focus on our tier one instructions. That's our core literacy instruction. And we wanted to update you on the work that the literacy committee has been doing to strengthen that instruction. So one of the ways that our Rye commitment, or one focus that the Rye commitment has is about building skills within students that can become effective communicators. And without the foundational literacy skills, that just isn't possible. So we know that we really have to lay the groundwork for our students to communicate effectively. And so we understand the importance of these early skills, and we want to bring about those in all of our students across all of our classrooms. And the Rye commitment also references high-quality, relevant, meaningful professional learning. And so we know that for an elementary teacher, high-quality literacy staff development is very important in the work they do every day. And we also are focusing on the most recent Science of Reading research and making sure that we're bringing that into our professional learning as well. This graphic shows our comprehensive literacy program. So these are all of the ways that we're getting at our literacy with our students. And we focus on three different areas, three different components of our program. So the first one is our reading and writing units of study. And this is where we do most of our comprehension work in addition to the phonemic awareness, the phonics, and fluency. The next two, those are the areas that we're going to focus on tonight. So our phonics and phonemic awareness in K-2, and then the spelling and vocabulary in grades three, four, and five. So just wanted you to make, be aware that we're not, we're not giving an update on kind of our entire program, but just those specific areas and the work that we've been doing. And I also wanted to review kind of the shifts in literacy that have happened over the last few years that are based on Science of Reading research. I want to make sure that you had, you know, the background so you get a sense of the kinds of conversations and the kinds of shifts that have been taking place across the district. One is that we are focusing on phonemic awareness, which is the ability to hear, identify, and manipulate phonemes. Why this is so important is that students with language-based learning disabilities such as dyslexia can show difficulties in that area. And so it's really important that students have explicit instruction daily in the early grades on that. We also have been focusing on having explicit instruction in phonics with a structured approach. So as opposed to like, to students kind of discovering rules in phonics, really telling them explicitly what the rule is, why it exists, and having them practice it in a really structured way. There's been a shift to teach the phonetics structure of high-frequency words. So that would be instead of having students just memorize a whole high-frequency word, but working through the word with them and showing which parts are decodable and which parts just have to be memorized because they don't follow a rule. So like when you take the word "said," you can decode the S and the D sound, but the AI in the middle that has to be memorized because it doesn't follow a rule. So we have those kinds of conversations with students. Using a phonics-first approach when decoding words, we want students, whenever they come across a word, to use their phonics skills first, as opposed to using a picture, maybe to try to help you figure out what a word is. And then the last one is using decodable text so students can apply strategies. So, and we'll talk tonight about how we have expanded our collection of decodable texts in our classrooms so students have opportunities to apply these strategies. They're not just, they're not just using more patterned books, but they actually have opportunities and they can see where those, those phonics skills are. So we have a literacy committee. It's made up of 25 teachers, administrators, literacy coaches, and parents, and we meet throughout the year. And every year, the focus of that committee, you know, changes and kind of evolves. But all of the discussions that we have and the decisions that we make are based in data. We are constantly talking about data and analyzing and making sure that we're going in the right direction. It's also focused on Science of Reading research, all those shifts I just explained to you. We're making sure that we're prioritizing those. And so based on our discussions last school year for, in the school year 23-24, we felt that we had two areas that we could strengthen. And one was phonics in K-2, and the other was spelling in three, four, and five, because we felt like our programs, while aligned to most of the shifts, they weren't as strongly aligned. And so we wanted to, we wanted to see what else was out there. I think that, you know, the last time that the committee chose a phonics program was like five or six years ago, and there weren't as many programs on the market. And since the Science of Reading research has really come to light, a lot of, there are a lot more programs out there. So what, what the, what the subcommittee that would focus on K-2 phonics, what they did is they prioritized selecting a phonics program to pilot that was aligned to the Science of Reading research. So they wanted to see what's, what is out there, what could we use to, to strengthen those areas of our program. And so we looked for explicit instruction. We looked for systematic scope and sequence. We looked for an emphasis on encoding and decoding. So the spelling piece was really important to us as well. And there were eight phonics programs that we matched up against a set of criteria. We evaluated them. We talked to representatives. We talked to schools that used them. And from those eight, we came to two programs to do a mini-pilot, and that happened last spring. And so we chose some classrooms around the district to pilot two different programs that we, that were, we rated quite highly, which were UFLY, which is the phonics program out of the University of Florida Literacy Institute, and then Hagerty Bridge to Reading, which, which was a new program at that time also. From that mini-pilot and analyzing that data, we decided to go with a year-long pilot this year of UFLY. And that was a pretty unanimous decision from the committee based on those, the results from the mini-pilot that we did. And so I'm actually going to hand it over to Melissa, who's going to talk about the UFLY program, what it is, and the professional learning we've done so far.
Okay, I think I did it right. Okay, thanks for having us.
Melissa.
Yes, sir.
Oh, man, okay.
There you go. Is that better? Yeah. Okay, great. So a little bit about the UFLY program. So we really loved that it hit on all of those criteria that we were looking for as a committee. So first, that idea of the systematic scope and sequence, that spirals, right? So a lot of the brain research around literacy talks about this interleaving process. So this idea that kids can see concepts and effectively forget them and then remember them. And that the more opportunities that that can happen, the deeper the cognitive connection is for the kid and the longer lasting. So with UFLY, you will see concepts introduced in kindergarten that are, that spiral and are deepened in first, and yet again, even sometimes in second. So that has multiple opportunities for interleaving. And in addition to that, once a new concept is introduced, each time a kid goes into a new lesson, there are still constant touchpoints for what they've done before. So we really loved that. We loved that it developed an awareness of the individual sounds or phonemes in speech, and at the same time, introduced the letters or the graphemes. The marrying of those have proven to be really successful for kids. It teaches students how to analyze word parts in order to decode words, write them, and also recognize, as Dr. Murray was saying, those decodable patterns inside of irregular words. It also ensures that every student is having an opportunity to read in a connected text, right? So not just looking at words in isolation, but putting it back inside of a text to really practice the decoding, also inside of the context of fluency and comprehension. As a committee, we also were looking for something that was evidence-based, right? We wanted something that was new so that it was responsive, but not so new that there wasn't data showing its effectiveness. So UFLY actually ran an extensive two-year pilot that showed success prior to publishing their program, which we thought was really helpful. And last but certainly not least, we loved that it was hands-on and engaging. As we know, no two kids are alike, no two learners are alike. And so UFLY has a ton of opportunities to tap out words, clap out words, build them with letter boards, write them on whiteboards, practice spelling them or saying them on your own or with a partner or with your whole class. And so we felt like that was really responsive to all kids that were in front of us, not just a few. So we're going to talk a little bit about the professional learning, and I will start by plugging that our K-2 teachers, I'm biased because I work with them, but they are unbelievable, and they've been ten toes down for this pilot from the beginning. So we really wanted them to have kind of a common foundation as we went into this pilot. So we took some time on the superintendent conference days to give an overview of the program. So the different components, the structure of the lessons, things to think about as you're planning, language that's helpful. So we did that prior to the start of the school year. And then what we did was we set up a program or a schedule so that teachers could sign up to have lessons modeled inside of their classroom. So I did some work over the summer, learning the steps and the structures, and then went into the classrooms to help model for teachers who felt like they needed it. And then as they became more proficient, which they did very quickly because they're amazing, then spiraling back to go in and co-teach with them or have them teach. And maybe there's one component of the lesson that felt tricky that we could work out together. We've also worked as grade levels to plan lessons. We've aligned our professional development, not only in-house, but with our TC advancing literacy staff developer. We've surveyed the teachers on what components of this program and this pilot would be most supportive to them to focus on. So she's aligned her first two times with us, specifically focusing on supporting them. And then we've, you know, constantly been talking as a PD team about ways to ensure success throughout the rest of the year. So ongoing professional learning and support via grade level meetings, coaching sessions, curriculum Mondays, really the sky's the limit, whatever's going to make them feel successful. And they've been amazing. So that's a little bit of that.
Thank you. So we also wanted you to get a sense of what a UFLY lesson looks like in the classroom. So this is Ellie Short's kindergarten class. And, and you'll see the kinds of drills that they do. You won't see the new learning piece, but just notice the kinds of drills and the repetition that they do throughout the lesson.
All right, so now I say the words and you help me tap them out. Are you ready? Fingers ready? Show me. Do you need to wiggle? All right, get them ready. Here we go. Not.
Not.
Ah.
Not.
Not.
Great, here we go. Dot.
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 Ah.
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 Um.
Write the sound.
Write the letter.
I give you the sound, you write the letter.
The.
Three times.
O.
No, once is enough.
The O.
Ah.
I did it.
Ah.
Ah.
O.
What do you, show me your words. O spells.
Ah.
Great, I'm ready. Ready for the next one? Okay, ready?
Mmm.
Low.
I could see so low.
Either one. That's good. You know how to write both, so that's a great thing. Ready? Let me see. N spells. All right, go. I've got my vowel, and I've got my consonant T, and I'm going to add. Whisper, read it. Everyone.
Not.
I love it. I'm going to change that consonant to a. Whisper, read it first. Everyone.
Ah.
Amazing. I'm going to change that T to a P. Whisper.
Ah.
Ah.
Great, okay. She's going to change my vowel, taking out the O, and I'm going to add an E sound. Whisper. Now, everyone.
Hey.
Good job.
Okay, Ellie, did you want to come up and just talk a little bit about what we just saw there?
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Okay, so as you just saw, phonics, UFLY phonics drills provide a systematic approach to teaching phonics, ensuring that students hear the sounds of letters and how to blend them effectively. These drills focus on critical skills like decoding, blending, segmenting, which are all important for reading proficiency. The drills are often interactive and engaging, helping to maintain student interest and motivation while practicing their phonics skills. The drills can be adapted to various learning styles, making them accessible to all students. The auditory drills help students produce sound recognition and blending while the visual skills reinforce their letter recognition and word formation. This multisensory approach enhances students' understanding and their retention. Each lesson includes eight steps. How each step is implemented depends on the student's level of their skill development and reading efficiency. But the basic format for the steps maintains, is consistent throughout the lesson. The routines span across eight steps in two days. The first four serve as a warm-up and a review of previously taught concepts. Students begin by practicing blending phonemes into words and segmenting them into phonemes. Next, they build automaticity with their grapheme and phoneme correspondence and other words, letters, and sounds. And finally, they connect their phonemic awareness skills, which is the ability to hear, identify, and manipulate the sounds into phonemes and spoken words with their knowledge to practice decoding the words and building their decoding skills. And I read that because I like you.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then to give you, you a good understanding of what?
All right, so now I say the words and you help me tap them out.
To give you a good understanding To give you a good understanding of what the new instruction looks like, the next video is from Jamie Gabbrini's class. So she's done all of the drills and now she's at the point where she does the new teaching.
Right now, we have the K sound, right? What sound do we hear?
C.
Well, what sound do we hear? K, right? What letter so far make the K sound?
C.
C and then a K, right? The next one we are going to learn is the digraph CK. We have these two letters that come together to make one sound. They are both consonants. They come together to make the K sound. When you make that sound, do you remember where your tongue needs to be? In the back of your mouth. The back of your tongue needs to be in the back, like touching the back of the top of your mouth. Can we say it? K. Right? It's a stop sound. So when you are saying it, you want to say like that swash, as Gabbrini. Everyone turn yours off. Ready? Just like that. Ready? My mouth is not open wide, too wide. My tongue is touching the back of my mouth. That's all. About this diagram, that makes this diagram the most special, the most special diagram, is that it will be at the end of a word or the syllable. It's at the end of the word. You won't see the CK digraph in the middle. You won't see the CK digraph starting a word. This one is at the end of the word after a short vowel. Part. Bu. U. A. K. Black. Okay? CK, I'm going to add our CK. We have this CK that we're going to add to our sound wall. Where should I put it?
Oh.
Where should I put it, Aggie?
You should put it in my by the.
You should put it near the kite, near the kite.
Why am I putting it here?
Because it's a CK and those two letters are the same basically as CK because they come together.
Our sound is the same sound. It's a stop sound. It's a K, just like our C, just like our K. And now we're going to have the CK. So we'll have three letters. Three of them can make the K sound. Track. Say the word.
Track.
Ready? Sh. R. A. K. Track. I hear a certain amount of sounds. I wonder if you hear that many sounds as well.
Great, thank you. And Jamie, do you want to come up?
Sure. Okay, so what you're seeing in this video is the introduction to a new concept that we're doing. So when you introduce a new concept, you want to make sure that you explain the skills and then relate it to something else that they've already learned so that they have that review. There's a couple other things that happen in that little aspect of time that are pretty important. So that articulatory gestures that we were doing, where you're making sure they know what type of sound it is, what shape your mouth should be making when you're saying those sounds, and then the tongue placement, where your tongue should be when you're making that sound. So those are all really important skills for them to have to make the sound the correct way. When they're making that sound the correct way, they're able to be able to decode the words when they're reading them and be able to spell the words when they're writing them. We also have, after that part, you add them to the sound wall, which is a consistent reminder and a visual for what letters and what graphemes make those kind of sounds. After you explain that and we practice that, we do a lot of talking about where the grapheme placements are in the words. So this is really important for the kids to see if that's going to be in the beginning of the word or the middle of the word or the end of the word. So when they practice that skill, they know exactly where it will be when they're reading it, when they're writing it. So we do a lot of practicing with that. After that, we practice that skill that we just learned with the reading and the writing. So we do it with an I do first. I show them how we read the word. Then we do it together. We read a bunch of words together. And then they do it themselves where they read the words to me. And then we do the exact same thing with the writing piece. And when we do that writing piece, they are usually doing it on what you saw that day was on a whiteboard that they could do it, the writing. And then I'm going around looking at what they're writing to make sure that they're using the skill and doing the correct thing. So that's just an example of the new concept on day one.
Great, thank you. And then Jamie, why don't you stay up here? And then Ellie and Jamie want to talk to you a little bit about what they're seeing in the classroom right now and the impact that the program's having.
Do you want to show the slide?
Yep.
Right now, we have. I can't even read it from there. There you go. Okay.
I'm sorry, you wanted me to just explain what I'm seeing in the classroom?
Yeah, what you're seeing in the classroom, yeah.
I mean, I've just seen the kids grow. They're loving the program. They're loving the routines. Their writing is just amazing. And Melissa came in the other day and I was just showing her the use of the irregular words. They're sounding out beginnings, endings. There's medial sounds in there. They're looking for vowel teams. They're talking about digraphs already. This is just something I didn't see until well into the spring and we're already seeing it in October. So I had a conference this morning for a child who's turning five tomorrow. And his mom said to me, he didn't know his letter sounds. He didn't know his letters when he came in. I was so nervous, but I knew he needed to come to school. And she said, in just two months, he knows every single letter, every sound. He's writing. It's really amazing to watch, so.
Amazing.
Yeah, we're really having.
I think, and what I'm really seeing is that side of the kids that their confidence is amazing. What they are starting to do on such an earlier stage of the school year, which I've not really seen as much at this time in the past, is that they're being a lot more adventurous with the words that they want to put in their writing. So they may steer away now from the easier words to put in there and then really put in the fancier words that they want to try and sound out because they're so impressed that they know these skills already and they feel so confident about them. I also really see that in their writing as well earlier on. They just feel like they have a little bit more confidence in sounding out those words or even just trying to sound out those words that could be tricky for them. And they just want to be able to be like, oh, look, now I see the CK digraph. I see it. It's at the end of the word. So they're really just into it. They're so engaged. They're happy to do it. When it's phonics time, they're excited. They get their whiteboards. They get their magnet boards and they are ready to go. And they are hungry to learn what the next new lesson is going to be or the new concept that we're going to be teaching them.
Great, thank you. And then I also was mentioning about the decodable texts and how we're putting different kinds of books in students' hands. And so I just wanted to invite Kim up to talk to you about our decodable libraries as well.
Hi, everyone. I brought props. So after gym and music and lunch and art, book shopping, oh, I have to add UFLY too. After UFLY, book shopping is like the next favorite part of the kindergarten day. They get their little book baggie, looks like this. And in the beginning of the year, they start with what we call old favorites, which are like The Billy Goat's Gruff or Harry the Dirty Dog that we've read over and over and over. They get to bookshop for one of those favorites and they get to choose just a storybook. And as the year goes on, and today was the year going on, they get to shop for level text, which are like the old-school type books that the kids used to read only. And now, in the past few years, decodables also. So Melissa and I, I think two or three years ago, spent a lot of time and a lot of research trying to find the best decodables for our students. And I think we did an amazing job. They love them. All of the kindergarten classrooms and first grade classrooms and maybe even second grade have these amazing decodable books. So today was my class's first day to shop for these types of books. They're separated in the front of my room. There's bins for the decodables. We talk all about that. And then there's bins for those leveled books. We speak with the kids about the decodables are for all those phonics skills that you have learned. You'll find the high-frequency words in these books that you know already. You'll find words that you can decode. We don't talk about the pictures. Like if you're using the pictures, those are in the level text. That's what you use for comprehension. Those are the pattern-type books. Two completely separate uses for these types of books. So inside the book baggie, they get to shop for a few of these different types of books. The parents, 7:30 this morning, received an email with, okay, guys, here's your job. This is what you do with these types of books. This is what you do with these types of books. If there's a word in those level texts that the kids don't know, just give it to them because they're using the picture to sound it out. Like they don't know the word giraffe. If the book says, I like the giraffe, they don't know that. They don't have the phonics skills to attack that. Just give it to them. Talk about the comprehension. What do they like about the story? Move on. The decodable books that stay in a separate baggie inside of this baggie are the ones that they can attack and read pretty much independently with all the phonics that they've been learning in UFLY. And as my colleagues here said, the UFLY program has, these kids are doing unbelievable work in class. Dr. Murray came into my room last week just to see the incredible phonics they're able to do, the reading and the writing. And that's all transferring from UFLY into their work. So we're super excited. We hope to get more decodables in, fingers crossed, for an RFE grant coming through. So, yeah. So Gabby, yes, yes. So we're super excited just to get more decodables in the hands of the kids at an early age because that's really moving their reading along.
Great, thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
So you can see that the early data on this program is looking pretty good so far. But the literacy committee is going to continue to follow the data pretty closely. And so we're going to be analyzing our Hagerty Phonological Awareness Assessments, phonics decoding assessment, decodable running records, NWA, and our developmental spelling assessments to really track student growth throughout this year. You know, if that all looks like it's tracking where it should and our kids are making really good progress, then we would kind of take this on as our phonics program going forward. Okay, so now we're going to switch gears to talk about the work we've been doing in spelling in grades three, four, and five. To give you some background on that, the literacy committee looked at a lot of spelling programs, just like what they did with phonics programs. But they're about a year ahead with the Spelling Connections program. So the literacy committee implemented a mini pilot in the spring of 2023. Last year, we did a full pilot in our classrooms of this program. And we analyzed the data all through last year. So part of the spelling program is our unit assessments. And so we analyzed that data to make sure that it was serving our students well. It was. And so we are doing a full implementation this year with all of the units being taught. And so I'm going to have Tara talk to you about what we saw throughout the pilot and our full implementation this year.
So our pilot year, as Dr. Murray shared, was last year. And throughout that pilot year, teachers were given a number of professional learning opportunities to make sure they felt really confident before the pilot even went underway. So we began by giving them three learning pathways starting in the summer of 2023. So we had two different date options for workshop sessions where teachers could get to know the materials, the philosophy of the program itself, really engage with both the physical print materials and the online digital materials, making sure that they felt really comfortable and confident going into the school year. So for teachers who didn't take one of the summer date options, they also had the option of taking some professional learning time to do that in September. And once that got underway, we really, by October, I would say, of last year, everyone was in full implementation mode. And then after a couple months, we did a mid-year pilot survey that we shared with teachers to gauge just how everything was going with the pilot thus far. So ease of implementation, how they were noticing transfer with their students' writing, engagement, growth. And we asked a lot of questions to give us some information on the backend to make sure we could gauge how well the pilot was going and its effectiveness. Throughout that year, we also provided a lot of in-class professional learning and coaching. I went into a lot of classrooms. I did a lot of modeling, co-teaching with teachers, a lot of trial and error, you know, as with any new program. You kind of have to work out the kinks. And for the most part, everything went really well. And I continue to get a lot of positive feedback from teachers around student growth and how their students are so engaged and loving the program. So after that year, we went into our full implementation, which is currently happening this year. It's been going really well. Again, I've continued to provide lots of professional learning options. I've been in a lot of classrooms to do this so far. In-class coaching, planning support, support with data analysis, which we've been doing a lot of data collection and analysis work to make sure that our students are growing and translating and transferring all of their new spelling learning to their writing. That was a piece that we had received a lot of feedback on[1526.14] That was a piece that we had received a lot of feedback on, that the literacy committee really focused on, was that we weren't necessarily seeing transfer in our previous spelling program, so that was something that we really looked for. And then this year, we're able to even get some more units allotted for on our scope and sequence because we were able to start earlier in the year. Last year, we weren't able to get up to full implementation until like October, November. This year, we started right, straight, hit the ground running at the beginning of the year, so we are able to get through even more of those units this year, which we're really proud of. And then going forward, we'll, you know, I'll continue to support that professional learning in classrooms with planning. We'll have a specific focus around differentiation, making sure that each student is really receiving spelling instruction in the patterns and principles that they need to make sure they're targeting their own personal growth. And then this next graphic just gives an overview of the concepts taught, not all of the concepts taught, but some of the concepts taught across grades three, four, and five. So I won't go through all of it, but you can see, as Melissa was sharing earlier, the way that UFLY is structured, Spelling Connections is structured similarly in that it spirals up the grade levels. So you'll notice that there is a review at the beginning of each grade level of those vowel sounds. So every year does begin with some review of vowel sounds. Third grade starts with short vowel sounds, diphthongs and digraphs, and then fourth grade starts with short and long vowel review, but it's a little bit quicker. And then fifth grade, they just do a review of long vowels, and then they move into those more complex concepts. But some concepts that are introduced in third are the same as the ones introduced in fourth and fifth, but they're introduced on a more complex, higher level. So for instance, you'll see the schwa sound, which is the /u/ sound that we hear in a word. That's introduced in both three, four, and five, but the way that it's introduced is different. So in third grade, they just do like typical schwa introductory, like words like above, where you hear the /u/ at the beginning of the word. Then in fourth grade, it moves into /r/ controlled schwa, like in the word water, /r/ is that schwa sound at the end. It is an /r/ controlled, but it's also considered a schwa. And then in fifth grade, it moves into final schwa with /l/, /n/, and /r/, so like in the word final, /l/, that schwa is at the end of the word. So you'll notice how the concepts do repeat, but they are leveled up each year so that students are able to add on to their prior knowledge. So each unit begins with a pre-test where teachers are able to assess student knowledge, what they're coming in with. Then throughout the unit, students learn spelling patterns through pattern sorts. They engage in various writing activities, and there's a number of online games that kids actually find really fun and engaging. They're not like fake games. They're actually real games with like battleships and things like that that kids really love. And each pattern is then connected to reading, writing, vocabulary, and actually, in third grade, it's connected specifically to phonics and content area work. So there are some science and social studies passages that kids get to engage with throughout each unit as well. And then each unit also ends with a post-test, and they're assessed on the same words that they were assessed on at the beginning. So teachers are really able to compare, beginning to end of unit, growth across that time, and then evaluate to see if students still need support in some of those patterns. And we do have review units that are every six units. So the review units consist of concepts that were taught in the previous five units to kind of get that culmination, to make sure that students are holding on to their prior learning. And we also do evaluate and look at their writing across, you know, throughout time to make sure that they're transferring that piece as well.
Great. Thank you, Tara. And Mary, do you want to come up and talk about the impact that you're seeing with this program in your classroom?
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. I teach third grade, and I just want to say that also, I was a mini-pilot participant and also part of the selection committee. So it's been great to actually have been part of the Spelling Connections decision since the beginning. There have been some really great observations that I've seen over the course of the year, really last year when we did our full implementation. Number one, I just wanted to follow up on something that Tara had said. The pre-tests that every unit has, with the exception of the review unit, is really important because it automatically differentiates by spelling pattern for students. That's actually a different approach than we've had in the past. It's usually just one set of words. So every unit, children are divided based on their prior knowledge, and it's been terrific. So what we typically do after that is we make sure that students, and I usually do it in small groups, really understand the meanings of those words, that they actually know how to pronounce them and actually what they mean. And that makes a big difference in terms of recognition in their reading and then being able to incorporate that into their writing. The program builds on previous skills, as Tara pointed out. In third grade, they're bringing in some of their second-grade skills, and we're actually looking really forward to seeing how this UFLY work and this strengthening of the phonetic understanding is going to impact their spelling connections, and we think it's going to make a huge difference. But obviously, within the program, third, fourth, and fifth grade, each one builds on the skills. I've seen students actually starting to spend more time trying to spell correctly throughout the writing. So it's not just sentence or words that we practice during our spelling session. It's actually during writing, during their reading responses, their writing work, developing their essays, students responding in science or social studies. And this, last year, I would say it took, because it's third grade, they have to spend a few months getting used to the program and starting to feel a little more confident in terms of the spelling patterns that are being introduced and also having opportunities to review. So I would say last year, about, you know, a third of the way through the year, quarter of the way depended on the child, I saw children really starting to realize, oh, I can actually encode that word using the spelling patterns that I've learned so far. They, as has happened with the UFLY, they are building more confidence. Having these specific spelling patterns, talking about them, making sure that students understand how they're pronounced, seeing words and familiar words that they know really has helped them know that they can start to spell differently and spell with more, you know, accuracy, which is terrific. They're also bridging their knowledge, this phonetic knowledge. Particularly in third grade, they're coming from that second-grade base, and as I said, they are really going to be encouraging much more spelling, I think, accuracy and maybe some moving at a faster pace as we come up with more of the UFLY background. I would say for teachers, it's actually a very teacher-friendly program, easy to execute. The combination of having a workbook and the online is great in terms of engaging the students. And the teachers, you know, with Tara's help, we've all gotten used to, there's different, you could do it daily, you can do it every other day, and so that's been really helpful to be able to modify that to our curriculum and the time that we have in our schedules.
Thank you, Mary.
Yep.
So our literacy committee this year will also continue to follow up on Spelling Connections. We're going to continue to follow the data to make sure that our students are showing growth, and we also want to analyze writing samples to look for transfer, because as Tara said, that was one of the pieces that we were really looking to target with this. So we want to make sure that the spelling patterns that they were taught in the program were actually seeing in their everyday writing. And then just in terms of next steps with literacy, we really want to turn our attention towards grammar. We have grammar embedded in our new K-5 units of study as well as a book, a grammar instruction book that accompanies it. And so we want to increase our amount of professional learning around grammar, really think more about the grammar skills that we're teaching and when we're teaching them. So that's on the horizon for the literacy committee. And we also want to be able to examine student writing, be able to provide targeted feedback for students, and, you know, just on a whole, we'll continue to monitor the effectiveness of our entire literacy program. And that's all. Any questions?
Great presentation, very comprehensive, and it's very exciting to see. As I always say, as a whole-language child, my heart is just, I was following along to your lessons, and I was like, what sound is she talking about? The CK. I was like, wait, that doesn't exist. And I was like, oh! I was like, the word clock. And then you went in, it's at the end of this. And so I say all this to embarrass myself, but to also say that there are real skills that come with that and are for a significant population and period of time in our reading instruction. It was not the focus. And so I clearly learned how to read and how to write. I would say I do really great at my oral presentations, but I didn't have some other challenges that may have made reading and learning to read and to write effectively that this type of instruction really allows to kind of get beyond. And so one of the questions I do have, and, you know, I love the data, couldn't be happier to see all the data and analysis. My question would be, as we think about the UFLY from K-2, we would expect, you know, all effective programs in three to five years, what data points should we be looking at in the next three to five years for us to say, this program has actually been significantly impacting our students in a positive way?
There are a lot of them. One data point we haven't really discussed are our number of students who need additional support. So looking at our AIS numbers is always really important to do, and we will continue to do that. So far, they're trending in the right direction. I can say that much. And so, but it really is like a holistic look at the data as well, you know, because we have so many different pieces of it. We also just would want to look at our phonics decoding assessments and making sure like the percentage of students who are meeting benchmark is increasing, and as well as the NWA and hitting our growth targets there. So there really are a lot of different data points that we will continue to monitor.
And I was so happy to hear you talk about the work of the UFLY reading, kind of bridging into that Spelling Connections. And I think about, okay, where you look at those skills that they're talking about in third grade, and what will these current second graders who are coming to you, but really in three years, what will the kids that you have who are coming to you, who have had this explicit phonics instruction? And so as another piece, and I'd love to hear that there is embedded differentiation already inherent in the spelling program that will allow for the program to exist even with the strengthening of the student's skill set. So maybe we don't have to throw out the entire program, but we're able to use different pieces of it in a different way to continue to support all the students. So I think that's a really great piece of that program, clearly excited me. I don't know, anybody else? I have a few.
Well, so first of all, thank you all. Just sitting here and being able to see the specificity around, and not just the specificity, but the deep understanding of how you're able to think about, what is, where are our children's brains at this time in their lives? What are the things that are going to help them make those connections? And then the spiraling was, I had this visual of this spiral in my head as you were talking about it, just makes so much sense, you know, from a person who is not an educator. So I think Jane gets, takes a lot more of this in a very different way than somebody who's not from a background of education. But, you know, from having sat at this table for several years, hearing how you all have talked about what this allows you to do with students and the confidence building that you're seeing happen in the classroom, I can't see Ellie Short, she's behind the podium. I'm like staring at the podium, trying to get your eye, is just phenomenal. I mean, and that, to me, always, I always jump to, okay, here we're seeing this tremendous growth in these students at these very young ages, and they're building this confidence. How do we keep it for when they go to sixth grade? And where do we, you know, clearly, we want to see how these things keep going, but, you know, three years is not that long from now. So we're talking about three to five years, looking at what are the data points we want to be able to be, seeing what are our objectives, what's going to tell us what this program is doing for our students and where else we want to take it. And then I think about, well, then where is that going to take those students who will then be, the kindergarten students now, who will in five years be heading into sixth grade? And what does that mean for them as students and how you approach that from those years? Because, you know, there's a lot, obviously, that happens in middle school, but to have this confidence level as you're leaving elementary school is just, you know, how do we capture and keep that?
Right. And I think that, you know, that was, you know, my point when discussing the Rye Commitment is that you have to have all that in place, right, to be able to do all the critical thinking and the communicating and the creative problem solving. And how we keep that going is, you know, and Dr. Byrne mentioned the Authentic Projects that we designed this past week, and it's that kind of curriculum work and leveling it up that we have to continue to do.
Right. And it's, you know, to not lose that excitement of the student, for the system to be kind of ready to catch these kids as they come in. So we're not getting them in sixth grade and going, ah, they know so much more than we're ready for. It's really looking at where, what is their data telling us in fourth grade that would say, okay, we got two years, guys, to figure stuff out, because these kids are coming in hot, like in a good way.
Yep.
Right? Like, we're able to do with our Spanish curriculum. It's been able to be pushed so far because the data has told us all along, they're coming in, they know more than, you know, what we thought they, than what they knew before.
Right.
And really ensuring that while three to five will tell us about the success of the program in total, three years will help us understand and start to give us a baseline to look for where we need to go forward. And you're talking about the spiraling, I kept thinking about the math and how, when we talked about the math curriculum, how important, and now when we look at our data, what is our data telling us about those kids who've had the exposure in the math? It's just, it's proving exactly what the scientists said.
And I believe you'll see the same with the literacy.
You will.
There's no way you can't, right? I mean, the things, it's, I'll stop. I could go on for hours.
But I also just want to compliment both the, everyone at all levels for your engagement and your excitement around this, because it's never easy to learn something new. And so, you know, there's always going to be those people who are going to jump right into the pool, but then to have everybody jumping in the pool at the same time is just, you know, that's where you find that more global success across the board. So it's just, thank you, guys, for doing all the work you're doing.
I don't want to monopolize, but I do have two more questions. Anybody else? I don't want to stop. No? Okay. I do have a question. When and how is the time structure to allow for this kind of more direct spelling instruction? Kind of in the course, in the arc of the day, where are we finding, because there's not a lot of time?
Right. So obviously, this, we couldn't pull the program off without the fantastic building leaders that we have as well. And one thing, these building leaders, and we've got our assistant principals here, they work very closely with the teachers as well. So thank you for coming tonight. They also work magic with the schedule, so they make sure that they've got some protected phonics time every day.
Phonics time translates to spelling time in three to five.
Correct.
Okay. And then we talked, heard a little bit about the spelling program in that it is very teacher-friendly, user-friendly, which is great. I'm curious to know about the consistency of the instruction, kind of K-5 across the continuum. Is it a pretty prescribed program in that similarly to kind of how math is set up, like, this is what you should be doing, and these are our skills, and the pacing and sequence is the same?
Yes.
Fantastic. I just couldn't be happier. So I don't know if you can tell, I'm geeking out again, as I tend to do for these things. It's not easy work, and I say this a lot, and especially in these early grades with these early skills, but these early skills are going to be what moves the margins in the high school that we're constantly looking and talking about, and how are we moving, you know, one percentage point, two percentage point, ensuring that all of our kids are meeting their own personal best. And it's through these foundational skills that they're all going to be able to do that. So while you only have them when they're five, or six, or eight, or 10, you are making an impact of them all the way through college. And so we just thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Murray, for bringing this kind of work to our teachers and to our administrative team, because it is the stuff that's going to make a difference.
Well, thank you. And thank you to the teachers for coming tonight and all the wonderful work you're doing in your rooms, and thank you to Tara and Melissa for your support as well.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. It's great. Okay, so we move on now to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. I see no public this evening, so I will not share my statement, but as always, please be reminded, we are always happy to have members of the public here to come speak to the board, or you can email the board at any time at rcsd... Oh, gosh. Feedback@ryeschools.org. I mean, how many times do I read that sheet? You'd think I'd have it memorized by now. Okay, moving on. So let's move on to the consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Val Lapham, seconded by Sean Crawford. Let's take a look at this evening's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. Okay, seeing nothing, can I have a vote on this evening's consent agenda? All those in favor? Seven to zero. So this evening, on tonight's consent agenda, we have, we are approving a contract with Sandbox Theater to work with our grade-five students at Osborne for the development of their school play. So that now makes a trifecta for Sandbox, working with all three of our elementary schools at Milton, Midland, and at Osborne. So a great experience for all of our kids. We are approving a $3,000 gift from the Rye Country Day School Parents Association to support Hurd &amp; Rye. Just want to make sure everybody understands, Hurd &amp; Rye is not run by the district, it is a group of parent organizations, but the district is kind of the fiscal umbrella for which Hurd &amp; Rye. So we are just beneficiaries of that money on behalf of Hurd &amp; Rye. We are also approving a slate of gifts from the Osborne PTO. $20,000 to support recess programs. Y'all know I love those big muscle opportunities. $15,000 for cultural enrichment, $9,000 for visiting author program, and $7,850 for circus arts, which is always a great night of opportunity for our students to showcase new talents. We also have an approval of a $5,000 gift from Milton PTO to support field trips, an approval of a $25,000 gift from the estate of Ann Hayes to support the previously established W. Ward Haynes Scholarship Fund. And so we are greatly appreciative to the estate of Ann Hayes for this scholarship for our students. We are also approving a facilities rental agreement, Lifetime Fitness for use of the squash courts for the girl squash team for the 24-25 season. And those are the big highlights of this evening. So now we will move on to presentation and discussion number two, policy. Ms. Boyle.
Thank you. So we reviewed both of these policies in our last meeting. Nondiscrimination and equal opportunity and the dignity for all. Oops, sorry, wrong one. They're coming next. First, we're going to talk about student admissions and non-resident students. See, too many policies. These we did review the last time. And the only addition that was made to both policies was a statement establishing the tuition rates that New York State approves every year. So we talked about how we are going to incorporate into student admissions information about not just school attendance areas, but also more... not just school attendance areas, but also more information about when we will, what opportunities non-resident students will have to be tuition-paying students because our non-tuition student policy will be ending with this, with whoever's remaining in the school district currently until they leave the system. But we wanted to make sure, Gabby actually raised it and was a really great catch to make sure that we included the language around how those establish, those tuition rates are established and they are done at the, at the state level. So both you have a, an additional statement saying when those will be established and incorporated in our reorganization meeting and then when those payments need to be made. So those are the only additions to those policies from when we reviewed them last And I did not receive any additional questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Looks good.
Wonderful.
All right. And then that will just roll on in to policy review.
Roll right into the policies that we have not yet reviewed, which are 0100, which is nondiscrimination and equal opportunity, and the policy 0115, which is the Dignity for All Students Act policy and school safety and educational climate reporting. So both of these have updates that are related to updates concerning Title IX. We will be bringing to you within probably the next month or so, a combined policy of what New York State requires for sex-based harassment and what Title IX requires for sex-based harassment. That wasn't quite ready yet, but these additional changes are more procedural than anything else in, in these two policies. So if we look at nondiscrimination and equal opportunity, the big additions in here are talking about making sure that information is accessible via our website when it comes to anything related to how you make sure people are aware of what all of the requirements are around making a claim. And then the other area is further down toward the end of the policy where we're referring to the grievance procedure that exists, that will exist within our sexual, sex-based harassment and Title IX policy, once we have a chance to review that. These are very prescribed procedures and they did not exist at this level of detail within what New York State required, but Title IX required a much more particular way of going through the grievance process. In addition, oh, sorry. In addition, you will see that there are some retractions or things taken out that no longer were necessary to have in the policy. So you'll see some strikes as well. In particular, one at the end where it has the annual notification, you'll see where we struck some of the detailed language around the protected categories and those are already included in the front of the policy, which is why we struck those.
I said one question earlier about the website accessibility. Did we mean to leave in the last sentence, the parentheses, insert appropriate title such as director?
Oh, it should say, just say director of technology. So we'll make sure that's taken out.
Okay.
Oh, okay. And then for Dignity for All Students Act, this also included some, I get to it's toward the end, additions that talk specifically about Title IX and the process around filing a grievance. The other addition that we have made within this policy is including the school safety and educational climate collection of data. This actually became a policy, an independent policy about a year ago. And we were just meeting with our, our legal team and they informed us that we could actually incorporate it into this policy instead of having to have a separate policy that speaks to it. So we've added it into the language here because it's all about the reporting out. And once we have this policy adopted with this change, then we will rescind policy 5710, which was independently about school safety and educational climate reporting, since it's, it won't be necessary to have it separate. So that'll be a part two to this update. Any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay. So if there are other questions, please reach out. Otherwise, we will bring these forward to our next meeting for a second review.
All right. Great. Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
All right. So now we have communications to and from the board and we had a policy meeting. I would imagine we've heard all about it.
Mostly, yep.
Anything else you want to share?
Not at this time.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. So there was a tech committee, technology committee meeting and I attended that meeting. And the focus or purpose of that meeting was really to have the committee come together for the first time this year and understand that the focus for the work of the committee this year will be on creating guidelines for the following areas. So the ethical use of AI, the data privacy ed law 23D, the use of AI in the classroom, creating frameworks for how AI can be integrated into lesson plans, teacher support and training, providing professional learning around AI, and also talking about student use of AI tools to define appropriate ways for students to engage with AI technology. There was lots of learning for, and conversation about how, you know, AI is all around us already, not getting away from it, it's already here. And really how can the district use and help inform and lead the way for teachers and students to be able to use the technology in ways that are appropriate in their learning and in their teaching and instruction. So really it will be a years-long effort to work on creating some frameworks and some guidelines for understanding and we will take that work on and as that work is happening, bring it back and let y'all know what's happening. But it's going to be a great committee. Looking forward to it. So our next committee meeting, looks like it'll be curriculum council, but that won't be until after our next board meeting. So we're going to have to wait a few weeks to find out all about the fun at that meeting. So we look forward to that. Are there any other communications to and from the board? Nope. Okay. So our next board meeting will just be a week from tonight. It'll be on November 19th. We will have our open topics as well as presentations on social and emotional learning in the elementary schools. So we look forward to that. It should be another great night where I can geek out. So I'm excited. All right. So seeing nothing else, can I have a motion to end the meeting? Or adjourn the meeting? I'll say it. Tom Stein, seconded by Matt Chibbenoff. All those in favor? Seven to nothing. Thank you all. Have a good evening.